I hear nothing on the other end. Hello, hello, hello? Hello?
Ms. Holler, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
You can. Yes, I can hear you now, but this is the first time I've heard you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll put Dick on the phone.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Welcome, everyone. I'm Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director for Planning and Zoning. I will be acting as your Planning Commission Administrator for this evening. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting, allowing for both virtual and in-person participation. Serving as our moderator for tonight is Christine Goldsmith. She will be going over the rules of etiquette for this meeting. Christine?
Good evening. I'm Chris Goldsmith, Development Review Coordinator for Calvert County Planning and Zoning, and I'll be moderating this evening. This meeting is being recorded on both video and audio for record-keeping purposes. For those attending virtually or on a phone, please keep yourself muted to ensure no interruptions to the evening. If you're asked to speak and you are attending on your phone, you can mute and unmute yourself by using the phone's designated mute button or by pressing star six. If you're on a computer, you can mute and unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone or mute button on the toolbar in the bottom left of your screen. You can also mute and unmute by using keyboard shortcuts. Windows, press Alt A. On a Mac, press Command Shift A. When questions or comments are requested of the public, those attending in person will be asked to speak first, and those attending virtually will speak after. If you are attending via phone and would like to ask a question or make comment when asked, please use the raise hand function, star nine, and you will be called upon, in turn, to identify yourself for the record and speak. If you are attending virtually and would like to ask a question or make a comment, please go to the chat icon on your Zoom page and type your comment into that section. Finally, please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you. Thank you.
I'm Steve Jones, Chair of the Calvert County Planning Commission. It is May 18th, 2022. It is now 7:07 PM. I apologize for the delay. We'll now take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller?
Here.
Commissioner Freeland?
Here.
Dr. Richard Holler?
Here.
Commissioner Kernan?
Here.
Commissioner Toohey?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
All present, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Item number three is action on proposed agenda. Does the Planning Commission have any changes for the proposed agenda?
Any changes or motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, second by Commissioner Toohey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Carolyn?
Next item before the commission is item four, action on proposed summary of actions. We have three of them. First one is item four A, which is the April 20th, 2022 Planning Commission Special Meeting.
Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the April 20, 2022 Planning Commission Special Meeting agenda minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toohey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is item four D, which is the April 28th, 2022 Joint Public Hearing.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that on item B, the April 28th Joint Public Hearing, we accept the meeting, the minutes as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Toohey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Doctor.
Next item is item four C, the April 28th, 2022 Planning Commission Regular Meeting.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, summary of action as proposed.
Thank you, Commissioner Toohey. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Kernan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Carolyn?
Next item on the agenda is item five, which is recognition of persons attending the meeting. Tonight, we have from the Department of Planning and Zoning in attendance, Mary Beth Cook, Director. From the Department of Parks and Recreation, Shannon Nizell, Director. From the Department of Community Resources, Jennifer Moreland, Director. Jacqueline Culver, Special Projects Manager. From the Department of General Services, we have Tom Jones. From the Sheriff's Department, we have Joshua Underwood, Correctional Sergeant, and Danielle Johnson. Will both be here in support if needed. Also in attendance for tonight is John Mattingly, serving as legal counsel. Becky Parkinson, serving as recording clerk, and again, Christine Goldsmith, serving as moderator. Next item before the board is item six, items for discussion and action. We have three. Item six A is the Department of Parks and Recreation Program Open Space Annual Program for FY 2023. Shannon Nizell will be presenting. I'm sorry, Shannon Nizell will be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Shannon Nizell, Director, Parks and Recreation. So this first item, the Program Open Space Annual Program for FY 2023. So Calvert County is required to submit this annual program to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources and Department of Planning each year before July 1st in order to remain eligible for Program Open Space Funds. The annual program includes proposed acquisition and development projects, and a project is not eligible for Program Open Space Funding unless it is listed in this annual program. Municipalities may submit their programs through the county. Calvert County submits municipal projects on behalf of the towns of Chesapeake Beach and North Beach, and county staff works with the towns in preparing this annual program. There are more projects listed in the annual program that are ever likely to be funded, given available resources. Listing a project does not constitute a commitment on the part of the Board of County Commissioners or the municipalities, and the list may be amended at any time. Title three, three dash, section three dash two oh five of the Land Use Article of Maryland Annotated Code specifies that certain types of projects may not be constructed or authorized in the local jurisdiction until approved by the Planning Commission as consistent with the comprehensive plan. These types of projects include streets, squares, parks, or other public ways, grounds, or open spaces, public buildings, or structures, and utilities. So the documents attached for your review are the FY 23 Program Open Space Annual Program Projects Consistency with Comprehensive Plan in Draft Form, the Calvert County FY 23 Program Open Space Annual Program in Draft, and the Calvert County FY 23 Program Open Space Annual Program Project Descriptions in Draft. And also, the, this annual program will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners on June 14th for approval and authorization to submit to the state. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? None being heard? Shannon, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the FY 2023 Program Open Space Annual Program as consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan, and that we recommend the Board of County Commissioners also approve such.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Toohey, second by Commissioner Freeland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None being heard. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Think I'm the next one as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a minute. Item six B is the Department of Parks and Recreation, Harriet E. Brown Community Center and Park Master Plan. Shannon?
Okay, and this one, we have a presentation, so once that's up on the screen, I can go ahead and go through that quickly with, with the commission. Okay, so in, on April 12th, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the Harriet E. Brown Community Center and Park Master Plan. So this is, this document is now being brought to the Planning Commission for approval as well from that. So we'll go through the presentation. Next slide, please. So the consultant that we had working on this project was Mans Woodward Studios, who is one of the on-contract consultants for this type of project. It was their first project with Calvert County, and they did a very good job with putting this, this project together. Next slide, please. So a little bit of summary on this presentation. I'll go a little bit over the timeline, the site location and overview, the process, and the documents itself. Next slide. So the project timeline up until the completion of the master plan began in February of 2021 with initial community input, where we had surveys put out to, to the public, and we garnered over a thousand responses in some of our surveys. We did surveys for, specifically for adults, and surveys specifically for youth to try to gain an idea of those different demographics for the project. And then, once the consultant was hired in about September of '21, we worked with them on all those items up there that you can see, onsite analysis, conceptuals, additional community input and presentation, all the way through April of this year. Next slide. Next slide, please. So as you can see on the screen, this is the site location of where the proposed community center and park would be. So this is off of Fairground Road, northeast of the park and ride lot, and southwest of the existing building that we're in tonight. It's south of Calvert High, and there are remnants of the old Calvert County Fairground on this property. Next slide, please. A little bit of a closer view of the park site. You can see where the, the old parcels were broken up at one point, and now it includes this, this entire site of just over 27 acres. It, the, the blue lines show some of the watersheds that we do have on the site. It is partially cleared, partially wooded, and also contains remnants, remnants of a Christmas tree farm on the site. Next slide, please. Next slide. So when we looked at public input and the information that we received back from the community, it was very important to the, to Calvert County residents to include a community center building, a park green, or gathering area, something for food trucks, farmers' markets, special events, that sort of thing, as well as playground, outdoor basketball, tennis, and pickleball. Other amenities that came high on the list included space for a memorial for Ms. Brown, pavilions, picnic areas, shared use trail, and hiking areas. Next slide. So the programming of the building itself, this indicates what would be the square footage of the different areas within that building, including, excuse me, including gymnasium and track areas, which would, the track would be on the upper level of the gymnasium, locker rooms, changing areas, as well as meeting activity and exercise areas as well. Next slide. Other areas include children's areas, office space for Parks and Recreation staff as well, for a, a footprint of, or a total gross square footage of about 40,975 square feet with a footprint of about 35,000 square feet. Next slide, please. Next slide. So with the completed master plan project, this is what the, the master plan turned out between community input, conducting feasibility of the site layout and site analysis, and looking at the best ways to lay out the needs of the community on this parcel. So the red area you see would be where the community center would be located. The light green area is kind of the park green food truck area, playground, memorial site. It's kind of all encompassed in that area. You'll also see space in the lower quadrant of that that includes space for tennis courts, pickleball courts. Basketball is right above that light green, park green flex space, and then multiple areas, the other light pink areas include pavilions. And then there's potential for a trailhead at an area of the property that could connect to existing trails with ACLT. Yes, sir.
Have you identified where the memorial site would be?
The, the site of the memorial would likely be, as indicated in the master plan, it is within that, that light green rectangle. I believe it might be where, I don't have my glasses on, but I think it's where it says number 10 or number seven in that area. So that would be the idea, but that would come more when we got into design. And, and this site also includes 273 parking spaces in this master plan. Next slide, please. So this image is the lower level of the proposed community center. Again, this is a master plan document, so this is more of a vision of what it could look like. It has not been designed yet, but this is an idea of what that space could look like with the two full court-sized basketball courts, which could be used for basketball, volleyball, indoor pickleball, as well as potentially different types of meets or tournaments, that sort of thing. There is an area for a mini-gym, similar to what we have at Northeast Community Center, meeting room spaces, flexible exercise studio space, art studio, a kids' area, locker rooms with restroom facilities, and, and then space for storage and some of the not-so-fun things that have to be included in a building anyway. Next slide, please. This would be the upper level of the facility, so it is only inclusive of what would be over the gymnasium space area. So this would be a track that is one-twelfth of a mile, all the way around. There is space for administrative offices, elevators, another smaller restroom facility, as well as a cardio area loft in, in this area as well. Next slide. And for the rendering of the facility, the community was more interested in a traditional look for this type of facility, so we, we really wanted to go with what the community was looking for with this type of building. And so you can, you can see that some of the pitches are a little bit different based on the side that, that we're on to make sure that we're, we're looking at everything to code. And then on the one side with the gymnasium, you can see that that's a little, there's a retaining wall on that side, so it's going to look lower than it actually is because it would be built into the side with, with the wall there. Next slide, please. And this is just another view of what the building may look like. Next slide. Next slide, please. This is always the least fun of any of my presentations. So with the, the costs that have been coming in recently on many projects, it was looked at at a potential $570 per square foot cost for the building itself. This also would need to include site improvements, grading, infrastructure, paving, roadways, stormwater, and those types of things. And the total estimate listed at the bottom would be a complete park build-out. That does not include phasing at this time. However, the building itself is that top 23 million at this point, which is not funded at this point. Next slide, please. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
There was a miss from Mrs. Dunkle, and Godfrey Smith was here last night speaking about this. This project is unfunded at this time, correct?
That's correct.
And we're still going to move forward?
So the, the project, the master plan, has been adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, and the, the request here tonight is for the Planning Commission to also approve the, the master plan for future development, if, if and when funding would become available.
Budget's not totally complete, so we're hopeful, right? So we'll see. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Shannon, you mentioned that there wasn't any phasing included in this project. Other, other master plans that have come before us have used phasing to spread out the costs and to make the project move forward as funds become available. How come this project's not phased?
The reason for the, looking at phasing on this project because the majority of the project is the, the main focus is the community center, so that whatever would need to be completed for that community center would basically be the first phase. And any of the other amenities, such as the tennis courts and basketball courts, and the flex space and, and those type of things would be secondary from a funding perspective. And when going through this project, looking at expending additional county dollars on the, for the consultant to include phasing of what really would be a, we need to focus on Phase One Community Center, wasn't, wasn't looked at as a priority when we went through this project.
So the property's been sitting there for several years, you know? It, it would seem to logical to keep the project going, knowing that you, you're not going to have enough money to build a community center, and we're, we're sitting here in an interim community center right now, that, that you would look at moving along with the site work and at least getting some, some play space in position over there so, so the public has some benefit to utilize the facility ahead of the building coming.
That, that's one thought. It has, however, been the, the direction to look at the community center primary.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners? Any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to this board find the Harriet E. Brown Community Center consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan and therefore approve.
Motion by Commissioner Toohey?
I'll second that if he includes, and park master plan is a part of his motion.
Certainly, sir.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Kernan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm hopeful you'll get this.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next item before the board is item six C, which is the review of the capital improvements plan, additional project, site for the emergency shelter and homeless daycare program. Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Services, will be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Community Resources oversees Calvert County's freezing weather plan, an annual planning process coordinated with Department of Public Safety and with Calvert County Sheriff's Office to ensure the safety of citizens during extreme winter weather. We have a documented need for an emergency weather-
We have a documented need for an emergency weather shelter due to an inadequate amount of beds in our local shelters and Safe Nights Freezing Weather Program. I've outlined the three-year service numbers for, for our homeless, annual homeless survey. You can see in 2018, we had 373, 2019, 451, and 2020, 440. We expect that number to be increasing for 2021. That data should come out soon. These numbers also include growing number of senior homelessness. The county's current Project Echo Shelter, built in 2010, has exceeded a veiledal- available capacity and has limits on serving the chronic homeless with serious mental illness. Instead, these individuals live in encampments and cars all around Prince Frederick, presenting a health and public safety issue and frustrating small business owners. A local nonprofit, Honor Own of Calvert, Inc., has been providing services to Calvert County's population of homeless for over 27 years. The nonprofit has proposed a partnership with the county to acquire and develop an emergency shelter and homeless day program at 85 Main Street and Prince Frederick. The property identified is a two-story property and is zoned for commercial and shelter. The plan is that Calvert County Government will own the property and lease the property to a non, to the nonprofit, Honor Own of Calvert, Inc., for a $1 annual fee, in exchange, the nonprofit will provide financial support of the property's monthly utility expenses. The Department of Community Resources has extensive experience in the applications and award of grants with both the Maryland's Department of Housing and Community Development and the Community Development Block Grant. These grants would assist with all of the costs related to acquisition, renovations, and ongoing operations of the property. The state's Continuum of Care, C O C., also provides ongoing operational funding for shelters. This property also has the space to provide offices for other homeless-related services providers, like the Lifestyles of Maryland, who can also add financial support, the shel- also financially support the shelter's cost. The agency has planned partnerships with a range of providers to address crisis mental health, housing, and employment needs. This Emergency Shelter and Homeless Day Program corresponds with 10.5.1 in the Comprehensive Plan, plan the expansion of public safety services and facilities to coincide with projected population growth and identified needs, and 10.5.1.2 focused primary attention on crime prevention. Because the chronic homeless problem in Calvert has reached the point where it has become a public safety issue. Communities with growing rates of homelessness see an increase in crime. Shelter and wraparound services are needed to transition these individuals to supportive, stable housing. This program also corresponds with 8.2.3.1 in the Comprehensive Plan. Direct public investment to infrastructure, services, and support facilities in town centers. Currently, Honor Own provides homeless support services in the Prince Frederick Business Park, which requires transportation for homeless individuals to participate and limits the hours the program can be operational. Directing this vital service to the town center will ensure it can be more effective. Recommendation: Review the proposed site for the Emergency Shelter and Homeless Day Program and vote on its consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. I've provided like the outline of the, of how it's cited in the Comprehensive Plan, and you'll see the breakdown there for this 6,000-square-foot facility. It is a residential and commercial property, and it has two uses. So the lower floor would be 3,906 square feet, and that would be where the Homeless Day Services Program is based. And then the upper floor is 3,906 feet, and that's where the emergency shelter would be based. This project is separated into two phases. We can focus on the, the lower floor first, getting the Homeless Services Day Program established. And we, the renovations to the shelter would be, would be next, because it has more requirements as a shelter. Source of funding for the project, as I mentioned earlier, would be Community Development Block Grant, and it would be in this fiscal year, 2023. With any remaining renovations, part of grant requests for fiscal year 2024, or for other grants for fiscal year 2023. This actually, this location is eligible for sustainable community grants because it is in a PFA and a sustainable community area. So those are, I'm sorry, strategic revitalization grants. So those are, that's another source. Under the Comprehensive Plan, you will see the, the zoning, and I mentioned zoning for shelter before, but we are, our shelter designation is group home. And it's 16, under 16, that would be residing. We don't have space for more than that in this facility. This is for a population, as I mentioned earlier, that has severe mental illness, so it's not your typical homeless shelter case that we would see in Project Echo. But this is the population that Honor Own serves on a daily basis. I have Danielle Johnson from Honor Own, the Executive Director, here with me, and has been very, we have a very good support team around this project with the Sheriff's Office, the Calvert County Detention Center. She mentioned Josh Underwood is here from the Detention Center. From the Health Department, both the Behavioral Health Office and the Somatic Health Services Offices are highly invested in this project in bringing services to that population because they're more at risk for chronic disease and for behavioral health, their behavioral health needs being met. I also have Tom Jones for, with General, Deputy Director of General Services, who's been a great partner in moving this project forward. And then Public Safety, we work with them, as I mentioned, every year with this emergency shelter, and we've talked about this for two years, really the beginning of the pandemic highlighted what a need this was. Certainly, we can do hoteling for, for some homeless, but there's others that need more support than that would provide. You will see a copy of the, the site plan in your packet. And there is also a picture that identifies where the property is on 85 Main Street. And there is an encampment behind the property. So it's in a good location. There has been work that has been done on that property since this picture, the pool was filled in. So it's a parking lot now around back. I did want to highlight a few things, just because this is a Community Development Block Grant, and I know Wilson's sitting there and has some experience with these kinds of grants. Because it is a Community Development Block Grant that would be funding this, we do have to do live testing on the property, so that will be part of the process. We have to, the shelters require generator, so that will be on the facility as well. And then additionally, anything above 600,000 estate funds would require a 20-year occupancy rate for this particular program. And that's for benefit to low and moderate-income persons through these activities supporting homeless. The other thing I'll mention with regards to that is that the D H C D procurement and Davis Bacon Act requirements would apply. So we would have to, you know, look at wages, appropriate wages, for the individuals doing the renovations on the, on the property. So that, that gives you a general outline. Do you have any questions?
Jennifer, you know, 30 years, thanks, thanks for the work all of you do. 30 years ago, we would deal with the homeless and mentally ill folks that weren't placed, and we had nowhere to take them. I was here when that happened. We would take them to the Sheriff's Office, Detention Center, and put them in the lobby, or do whatever we had to do to get them mostly out of the elements more than anything. A lot of things that people don't know, several times a year, I go around with, I'm sure you worked with Nick DeFelice, so we work together. So we go out several times a year, identify the homeless, and report back to you folks, and try to find placement for them. Unfortunately, a lot of them don't want to be placed. But I, I just want to say thank you for, this is important work, and thanks for what you're doing, because I have seen what happens when there's nowhere to go. So thank you.
Thank you. I want to recognize Jaclyn Culver. She's a Special Projects Manager and really has worked so hard on this program for the past two years.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Chairman. Jennifer, have you already acquired the property?
We have been approved to move forward, and we are working, working on the option right now.
Is it under contract?
We cannot. So by D H C D standards, you cannot negotiate until after you're approved for funding. So with acquisition, you basically have to show two appraisals, and they take the average of those appraisals, or within a range of the average of those appraisals that's reasonable under D H C D standards. So that's incorporated into the option language with the purchase agreement.
So within the 800,000 of the C D grant will be the acquisition?
Correct. Yep. So partial acquisition and renovation.
Are you at liberty to tell us what the acquisition costs are?
I actually can't, no. But I can tell you what the Sstat estimate is and what the property was listed for. But I, I can't speak to that because we really cannot discuss it until we receive formal approval, and that will come in July. So that happens in July, and then our purchase, the negotiation period is concurrent with environmental, and that will happen in August. The option period is open till November 1st.
So what is the, what's the Sstat number?
Sstat was 607-160. And then the list price was 1695, I believe.
So that gives you something around $200,000 to put into the structure, to bring it up to whatever the code requirements?
Yes, we do know that some of the windows need to be replaced to be in compliance with the code, five of the windows.
And, and the, the, the upper floor will be considered residential, is that right?
Yes, or-
Institutional?
Group home. Group home residential.
Okay. So does that require, and I heard you say generator?
Mm-hmm. That will require a generator.
Kick it item.
Yes.
Does it require sprinkler?
It may.
Tommy, does it require sprinklers?
I believe over six rooms requires a sprinkler. Is that making me bad?
How many beds?
So at this point, we do not have to state on the application with, at least with D H C D, how many beds. What we estimate is about four for the, four to six for the women's, and eight, around eight to 10 for the men's section. And it's very, it's a very large open space. There's two very large areas to, to create it. But it is a dormitory-style shelter, because it's an emergency drop-in shelter.
Besides the, the development cost, what are the maintenance or ongoing costs going to be to the county?
So the vendor, actually, because they no longer will have to pay a lease, they're going to use their funding to, the vendor, or the sub-recipient being Honor Own, they would be using their money to help with the monthly maintenance, or to pay towards the monthly maintenance costs. And we can have additional-
Did you say to help with, not to cover?
Well, we can also get additional vendors in there. Lifestyles of Maryland is another. So we, what we have to do with D H C D grants is provide data for each of those sub-receipients. So we can have multiple sub-receipients providing a service in the space, and that would, they could share the costs.
Okay, so I-
But they will pay fully for the monthly utility costs.
So I, I have a follow-up. Is there, is there a cost to the county to maintain the building?
Yes, the ongoing costs, and Tom can, oh, he can speak more to that, but they, we would be responsible for major repairs.
Come on up, Tom.
And on, on an average, the monthly costs are less than 2,000, 1,097.
Tom Jones, Deputy Director for DPW General Services. At this time, we really haven't put the numbers together to see what the actual amount would be towards that. I think just some of the general maintenance would be the electric, the water, the sewer, just maintenance of the grass. So, I mean, and I think Jennifer got those numbers in front of her.
Yeah. We did a five-year estimate, but looking more closely at the most recent years and allowing for that, because obviously, everything's increased.
When, when you look at the overall homeless population in the county, there are way to determine if they are local to the county?
Yes, we, yeah, go ahead, Jaclyn.
Just announce your name first, please.
I'm Jaclyn Culver, Special Projects Manager with the Department of Community Resources. And we have done an annual homeless survey since I was born. And so when I took over the position, I was able to look through all the years of data. And one of the things we do request, so the survey is given to all homeless service providers that provide services to Calvert County residents. And as part of that service, we survey, we identify the cause of homelessness, household size, demographic information, and also where residents of, or transient populations, where they were, became homeless. And in the 90% of those individuals became homeless in Calvert County or have been homeless in Calvert County for a significant period of time, if they have been unhoused chronically. And our biggest areas for residents seeking homelessness services are Prince Frederick, Lesby, and the beaches at this time.
So, so was that a percent? What was the number?
I can give you the number specifically. If you give me like a minute, I'll look it up. But it's, it's in the high 90s.
So out of 400, average, around 90 are local folks?
Let me, I, if you give me two seconds, I'll look up my survey and give you the actual number. I'm happy to be, I'm happy for someone to ask.
Chairman Jones, I do have a public question. When the time should arise?
Okay. Do you want to ask that now? I don't know if you're, what your order is.
Commissioners, are any more, let me get through the Commissioners first. Commissioners, any other questions? I'll take, we'll take that question.
Okay, sir. Mr. Joseph Cormier asks, is this primarily for individuals, not homeless family units, specifically for individuals with severe mental health or developmental disabilities?
Yes, you are correct. The families, we typically are able to serve through Project Echo, or I will say we've been able to do rapid rehousing and, and short-term hoteling with families to get them into housing. That's a population we've been able to be a little more successful. There's a lot of supports in place for them, like the McKinney-Vento Specialist for the public school system. The, this population of severely mentally ill, and those that have additional cognitive challenges, they require a lot more support than is currently available, especially in Prince Frederick, which is where many of them are based. I mean, Danielle, if you want to speak to that any further, you don't have to. If needed. But she works with them day in and day out, and they're, they, they have a very close trust built with that population.
Yeah, that's, that's tough work. It really is. It's, uh, hard to get everybody heading in the right direction, right?
That's certainly a burden to the public safety.
Not a burden, but it's just, it's, it's, uh, it needs to be dealt with, and then we need to take care of folks, whether, irregardless of what their financial situation is, so.
Mr. Cormier also has another, sir.
I'm going to take one more question from Mr. Cormier.
Okay. He says, and while you're looking up numbers, is there tracking on homeless veterans suffering from addiction and/or PTSD?
We track numbers for veterans, but I will say that population is a lot smaller than I think many of us anticipated to see when we did, when we ran the data. We, we estimate that that's because many of them don't seek services. We've seen that be a trend, especially with, that's from the Vietnam War era, and that's been tough to see.
Do I have any, go ahead, ma'am, please.
This is Jaclyn Culver, Special Projects Manager. So last year was a little bit of a different year, but I want to give the most recent numbers I have. So out of the total individuals served last year, 330, so 75% reported a last known address in Calvert. And 72, so that's 16.4%, were out of county, reported where they became homeless. And 40 individuals, so about 8.6% reported they didn't know where they were last homeless.
So the, the interesting thing is, I, and I know you've talked to folks too, but a lot, there's folks that come here because they get robbed and they get horrible things happen to them. And Calvert County is a safer place to be for, for some of these folks. That's what, that's what we hear from folks, so. But it's interesting, because we hear a lot, a lot of people will say these people aren't from Calvert County, right? But they are from Calvert County, right?
Yeah, and then the top cause of homelessness that's been reported is consistently family eviction. So a family member has asked that person to vacate the property due to domestic disputes, domestic violence, landlord eviction. And a high one also is alcohol and drugs. That's one of the leading ones as well. So it is really the familial evictions and alcohol and drugs, which tend to be an issue. And we do track the veteran population as well, which tends to be a little bit lower in the, in the population that we're serving. Most households are one, two, three-person households, and most people are singled or separated, which coincides with the family evictions. And most are between 21 to 46 years old, and mostly female. So, and the veteran population numbers are, are quite low compared to the other populations that we're serving, whether it's alcohol, drugs, or mental health.
Thank you, ma'am.
They definitely overlap.
Thank you for those, that was, that was quick.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, please.
Follow-up question, sir. You just used the phrase mostly female to refer to this population, but I know that we had discussed, size-wise, that we were going to do male-
Yeah.
You just used the phrase mostly female to refer to this population, but I know that we had discussed size-wise that we were gonna do male.
So-
Dorm twice as big.
Yeah, so, um, the female, so populations served by traditional programs are typically female. Um, it's young women, sometimes with children, sometimes by themselves, who will come and seek traditional services. So those numbers are higher because it's easier to serve those populations. It is the older male who perhaps has substance abuse or mental health challenges that is very difficult to serve based on the programming that's already in place. Um, due to, we use the VI Spadat, um, to categorize risks of homelessness and someone's vulnerability score. And certain things such as being a family with kids, uh, domestic violence situation, a veteran, chronic mental health challenges place you differently. Um, being an arsonist, someone who's been recently incarcerated, you score is, um, harder to house. So it's more of a priority to get them into housing, so they're more, it's easier to serve them with the services offered by the Maryland, uh, Continuum of Care, which comes on through the HUD funding. So that's where you see folks, those people are prioritized when housing, permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing opens. They're considered the most vulnerable so they can be entered in quicker than someone who's a single male.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
Great information, thank you. Commiss- Commissioners, any other questions? I opened it up for a question, um, on, online, so I'm gonna open it up for any questions or comments from the public as well. Is anyone has a comment or a question? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on the matter of the Capital Improvement Plan, additional project, uh, the Calvert County Homeless Emergency Shelter, rec- recommend approval. And that, uh, it's found to consistent with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan.
Second.
Uh, I'll take Commissioner Toohey as a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries, Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ma'am, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Jones, may I have a point of clarification on that?
Please, yep.
Um, does that motion and approval include finding consistency with the adopted comprehensive plan?
Yes, I did say that, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Does anyone disagree with that? I think we're good.
Next item before the board is Item Seven, which are items of interest. We only have one item, which is Item Seven A, which are the site plan and subdivision application lists. I just want to point out that that is not an all-inclusive list, it's just those that are anticipated to come up before, um, consideration in the next couple of months. If no one has any questions, I'll move on to Item Eight, which is-
Before you move on, is it possible for it to get a complete list?
Yes.
Okay. I would ask for that, that way we're not surprised.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay, the next item is Item Eight, which is public comment. At this time, we will open up the meeting for a public comment according to Calvert County Ordinance Number Fifty-One dash twenty-one. The Planning Commission Chair will first request comments from those attending in person and then from those attending virtually. Speakers, whether in person or participating on phone or virtually, will be limited to two minutes as individuals and five minutes if they are designated to represent a group or organization. Do we have any in-person?
Any comments from anyone here tonight?
Chris, do we have any for comments online?
We do.
Please.
We have Mr. Joseph Cormier.
Yes, ma'am.
You can unmute, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Joseph Cormier and I live in, uh, Calvert County, Maryland. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to give my support for this, uh, acquisition of a building for homeless, uh, individuals in the county. Putting resources in to be proactive instead of waiting to be reactive is going to increase, uh, the bang for our buck a thousandfold. And I'm all for it and I want to give my support for the Harriet, uh, Brown Community Center. Uh, we need another space in the county for students and families to go and meet and do positive things. And I hope that the county commissioners can find in their budget to fully fund this. In the same breath that they say we keep taxes low and we lowered your taxes, we also need taxes to do the things we need to do. So these are positive things that need to happen in our county and I support them a hundred percent, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Any other questions, holding?
No, sir.
Carol?
The next item before the commission is Item Nine, which is the Planning Commission Annual Meeting. Uh, we, we have divided it into three separate items, Item Nine A is an overview of the process and I will be presenting. In accordance with the, um, Planning Commission's adopted bylaws, which is Article Four dash D of the adopted uh, document of December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Planning Commission is required to hold a meeting annually in May, either as, in a regular or special meeting session to review the prior year's work and progress made on implementation of the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan. Oh, thank you. Uh, the information provided in the, uh, work report covers two thousand and twenty-one and offers a detailed accounting of the work performed by both the Planning Commission and the Department of Planning and Zoning Staff under delegated authority. Due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, the Planning Commission's meetings resumed to be held at the Harriet Brown Center and virtual, as a virtual and hybrid meetings on November twenty-twenty-one. Some of the information, uh, included in the report will be submitted to the Department of, Maryland Department of Planning, uh, as part of the annual report from the Planning Commission, which is due July first. That, um, annual report is currently in draft and is anticipated to be before the Planning Commission for, uh, review and consideration at its June fifteenth regular meeting. Uh, with that, I will go on and say that, uh, does anyone have any questions on the overview? So I'll move on to Item Nine B, which is the Review of Operating Documents. Um, we have two primary operating documents, which are the Rules of Procedure and the Bylaws. I would point out that there is a third operating document, which is, uh, known as the Rules of Procedure for Contested Cases. That was adopted in, I believe, two thousand and nine and the last time it was used was in two thousand and sixteen. So we have not brought it before you for consideration, if you would like to see it, I would certainly be happy to provide a copy. Uh, the Rules for Contested Cases are for those cases in which the applicant, it wishes to argue one of the staff recommended, uh, conditions. Okay, so, um, with that, I would like the chair to open for discussion for amending, uh, the Rules of Procedure if necessary.
Commissioner, any amendments or changes to the rules? Any questions?
I would like to point out that the rules were initially reviewed at last year's annual meeting and they were ultimately adopted, I believe it was December fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am. We, I'll take a, entertain a motion for, uh, the Rules on Procedures. Motion by Commissioner Kernan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toohey, all in favor?
Aye.
All? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Carol.
The next document is the Bylaws, also, uh, last reviewed at last year's annual meeting and adopted, uh, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Commissioners, any questions? Or comments? I will also entertain a motion.
Motion to accept and approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toohey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Carol?
Uh, the next item is Item Nine C, which is the Annual Report of Work Performed in Two Thousand and Twenty-One. Again, I'm just gonna go over a few things that, um, some of the information will be included in, um, the annual report to the MDP, which will be presented next month. The work responsibilities in this report were divided into four basic categories, planning, zoning, development review, and administrative. Table one, um, on the report below reflects the Planning Commission in two thousand and twenty-one reviewed and acted on proposed master plans other than the comprehensive, uh, compre- Calvert County Comprehensive Plan. Or programs that in, needed updates or amendments thereof that required a determination of consistency with the adopted comp plan. These applications included documents such as the county's proposed capital improvement projects, solid waste management plan, water and sewer plan, hazard and flood mitigation plans, land preservation plans, parks and recreation open space plans. We had two items, uh, before the board, which they acted on, which was the Capital Improvements Plan and the Department of Parks and Recreation Program Open Space Plan. Uh, another set of documents that the Planning Commission reviews, although they do not have to, uh, approve or accept, is the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance Reports, uh, there are two of them that are prepared each year. Um, the first one that was, uh, submitted was on April twenty-first, that's known as the Spring Report. And the second one was the, uh, November twenty, uh, November twenty-twenty-one report, which is known as the Fall Report. With regard to the Town Center Master Plans, uh, the master plans mentioned in the report are updated because, uh, are done generally as, um, subsequent to the comp plan and is adopted to ensure consistency with the goals and objectives and recommendations of the comp plan. So we are now in the process of, um, preparing updates for the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan and the Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan. There's an extensive review in here, I'm sure that you all are very familiar with the steps that have been taken so far, so I will not, uh, repeat that, but, um, next is the zoning section, um, the Planning Commission's involvement in the zoning is for any work related to proposed changes in the adoption of the zoning maps called MAC, Map Amendments or the zoning ordinance, known as text amendments. These duties include, but are not necessarily limited to work sessions with staff and consultants, public outreach, review of public comments, conducting public hearings and or joint public hearings. The Maryland Annotated Code for Land Use states that if the purpose of a map amendment is to change the zoning classification, the legislative body, which would be the Board of County Commissioners, shall make findings that address the recommendations of the Planning Commission regarding consistency of this application with the County, Calvert County Comprehensive Plan. So therefore, we had, um, four amendments, proposed amendments. One was, uh, a map amendment to the water and sewer plan and the other three were text amendments primarily related to town centers, specifically Prince Frederick, uh, and Lesby and Solomons. Um, the next section is Development Review Section. Uh, the primary responsibility in reviewing for proposed development projects is to determine the, that the project is in compliance with the adopted Comprehensive Plan and any other applicable master plans. Find that the project meets all the applicable zoning ordinances and regulations with certain conditions if necessary. And to consider, uh, appeals of these decisions or recommendations from the Architectural Review Committee and in some cases, planning and zoning staff. So, um, I'll go on, the compilation of, of this information that we're talking about now is, um, helps the planning and zoning staff to estimate the volume, volume of work required for the upcoming year. Uh, appropriately assign workloads, identify emergence, development trends and patterns within the county as a tool for long-range planning. This information, uh, reflects the type and number of development applications that have been submitted to planning and zoning during the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-one. So first, we have subdivisions and concepts. And I'll just go through the types and anything that is really important, um, I'll point out because we have a summary table that, you know, identify, specifically identifies the number of cases. Um, we have major preliminary plans, minor preliminary plans. And I just want to point out with the major preliminary plans, there was, uh, not much action in two thousand and twenty-one. We only had three major preliminary subdivision applications for review. Um, all three of these were for residential development and only one of them was located in the tier three, which required, uh, the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing. Okay? So subdivision final plaits are also there, of course, the Planning Commission must, uh, the Planning Commission Administrator must certify to the Planning Commission that all major subdivisions have, uh, met the conditions of the preliminary plan approval as well as all zoning, applicable zoning ordinances, uh, and regulations. So those come before you. Uh, replattings do not come before you and replattting is, uh, subsequent amendments to approved subdivision record plaits. Um, uh, they're are reviewed and approved in-house and in two thousand and twenty-one, we had a total of seventy-six that were processed, of which fifty-three were recorded. Okay? And we, this is the first time I believe we've done this, but we also split out, uh, the number of recording packages because there is quite a bit of work that is done once a subdivision is approved or recorded, the original pla- and certified uh, to the Planning Commission, the, uh, original MyLars must be, uh, recorded in land records and that includes all legal documents, uh, that must go through the county attorney's office for legal sufficiency. So there's quite a bit of, of, um, subsequent, um, work to be done on those. In two thousand and twenty-one, uh, the clerk for the Planning Commission processed fifty-eight recording packages and, uh, which were processed and recorded, uh, in the Calvert County Land Records. So we'll move on to site plans. Um, it's important to point out that on June sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, the, uh, BOCC adopted Resolution fourteen dash twenty. Uh, this resolution changed the, um, uh, development review process and conceptual site plans, uh, were, were moved from being a voluntary plan to a mandatory process. Uh, the new site plan process, uh, became known as the Three-Step Process. And it was approved so that it could be consistent with the review and approval of existing stormwater management and subdivision processes. So now all of our development review processes are done in a three-stop, three-step process. I would just go on to say that, uh, site plans are divided into two basic categories, category one and category two. Category, category ones include the multifamily and attached residential and manufactured homes. Non-residential projects including commercial, mixed-use, institutional, government, and industrial, um, projects. And those must be approved by the Planning Commission. Uh, category twos, uh, for your information are the smaller projects, seventy-five hundred square feet or less cumulative and those are done in-house. Detailed site plan, development plans are, um, submitted after the concept approved, is approved by the Planning Commission. The detailed site development plan is, includes step two and three of the process. Uh, step two, uh, is the longest process, which is the review and approval of, of, uh, the technical construction plans for the development of the site. Uh, generally, it's, uh, as I said, the longest step. Step three begins when the detailed site development plan has met all the requirements of the review agency and is ready for sign, final signature approval. During step three, again, as in, uh, the final plat, uh, subdivisions, uh, all legal documents must be executed and construction bonds posted prior to signature approval of the plan. And prior to submital, subsequent, submital of, to, for building permits. Um, red line revisions to detailed site development plans, um, are, again, um, changes, revisions that are required either, uh, as desired by the applicant or as determined by the site inspectors when they go out to final the, the plan. Uh, we want to make sure that we have, with the red line, we will have a complete, uh, as-built document on red- We want to make sure that we have, with the redline, we will have a complete as-built document on record. During last year, we had twelve redlines and approved eight. So table eight is the chart that shows all the documents and the types of plans that were submitted in two thousand and twenty-one that required Planning Commission approval and they are specifically listed. So if you have any questions on that, I will be happy to answer them. Again, table nine shows those development applications that required review and approval by the Planning Commission.
Hey, Carolyn, I have a question regarding table nine.
Yes.
The tan color, there are, there are two county administrative building demolition. But the second one talks about the Amoco Station at ten Solomon's Island Road. Why, why is that listed under county administration building?
Oh, I, it should not be. I apologize for that. It should be.
That was a separate project, correct?
Yes, yes. I stand corrected. It should be the Amoco, former Amoco site. And I will double check because I also have the same number. I do know that they were presented on the same night. So I will check that. Chart A entitled number of total applications processed between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-one. It shows the trend, which we, I, I'm going to say because of COVID, we had a low in two thousand and twenty and we are now on the, on the rise again. So the specific numbers are in the, and percentages are in, on page eleven of eighteen. Along with all of the development review tasks, there are administrative variances. Per section eleven dash three of the zoning ordinance, the zoning officer may approve variances to sign heights and other variances. But the Planning Commission may grant administrative approval for, oh, I'm sorry. The Planning Commission Administrator may grant approval of administrative variances for the reduction of side and rear setbacks on non-residential properties to zero feet if certain criteria are met. Under section six dash three oh one E, the Planning Commission Administrator may allow up to fifteen percent reduction in parking requirements if certain criteria have been met and adjoining property owner is under the same ownership. In general, the PCA approval requests are performed during the review of the site plan process and referred to in the staff reports to the Planning Commission when presented. Variances and other actions by, other variances must be approved by the Board of Appeals, which is not under the authority of the Planning Commission and therefore not included in this report. In two thousand and twelve, we had a total of twelve administrative variances were processed, one by the zoning officer and eleven by the Planning Commission Administrator. Then the, there are certain variances that may be elevated to the Planning Commission. Those are for architectural review, primarily architectural review. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were two brought before the Planning Commission. The first one, if you remember, was appealed by the property owner for the required change in road name and address. Okay? And that was deferred a couple of times and brought back. The second appeal was for Rebecca Fields for a request to impact steep slopes. Along with this, we, I just want to point out that because of COVID, the state of Maryland and Calver County issued ordinances for tolling of all development plans and approvals due to the COVID epidemic. The tolling period for both the state and county took effect on March fifth, two thousand and twenty, and ended March fourth of two thousand and twenty-one. This tolling period effectively extended the validity of eligible, eligible projects and approvals for an additional year. So in two thousand and twenty-one, we only had four plan applications that were, that required extensions that were not eligible through the tolling. Two were site plans and two were subdivisions. Technical Evaluation Group is part of the development review and approval process. Table eleven lists the number of meetings. Just want to point out that in October of two thousand and twenty-one, the TEG, SEG meetings were combined and into one agenda and revised so that the projects were scheduled by engineering company to make it more convenient for the county stakeholders. And it seems to be working well. So finally, well, I don't know if it's finally, but we will move on to architectural review applications by type and process. Just want to point out that we had eighty-seven applications, but sixty-one percent of those were handled administratively by staff and thirty-nine percent were reviewed by the, the designated architectural review committee. More specifically, only one committee processed those applications and that was the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee. The remaining six ARC review committees could not achieve a quorum to participate in the review and approval process.
Is there a, is there a stipulation if you, if you fail to attend X number of meetings, you're replaced?
Yes, but Commissioner Freeland, that, one of the problems is we already cannot fill vacant positions or keep a quorum. So to take, take members off the committee would not help the situation. I believe, and Mary Beth can talk about it, but I think we are looking into considering changes in that, suggesting changes in the process, in the ARC review, review and approval process to the BOCC at some time in the future, so. Other projects, other projects considered by the board, they're miscellaneous in nature, was a transportation traffic discussion and discussion on census overview and summary. Final section of the report addresses the administrative actions. The Planning Commission shall adopt rules to conduct its business, keep records and resolutions, transactions, findings and determinations. The Planning Commission must engage in a common set of functions throughout the year to meet the organizational's goals and responsibilities. These tasks include but are not limited to preparing annual meeting schedules, conducting regular special meetings, holding public hearings, participating in joint public hearings with the BOCC, review and approval of minute meetings, review and approval of operating documents, and election of officers, and preparing annual reports. So I did not this year give you a percent, break down a percentage of those functions. I just listed them for the year by month. There is also, along with this, chart B shows the Planning Commission attendance record and by function and meeting. So that concludes the report. This report is to, if accepted, would move on to the Board of County Commissioners for review. They do not have to adopt it. It's just for their information.
Commissioners, any questions? So what we need is an approval for the annual report performed in twenty, for work performed in two thousand and twenty-one and direct staff to forward to the BOCC for review. Is that correct?
Yes.
So moved.
As corrected.
As corrected.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, second by Commissioner Kernan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Carol. I can take it from here if you want.
Okay, well, just give me one more shot at it. Item nine D is election of officers. Now, Mr. Chair, you may take the floor.
All right. So I just want to start by saying this is my second year as chair. Thank you to this board for your patience and your advice from everybody. I've gotten some advice from everybody here. Thank you to staff for putting up with me and every time I called, you got the work done for me. I just want to say a heartfelt thank you. I know sometimes I can be demanding and I want things in a hurry, but just thank you very much. I really appreciate all the hard work you guys do. And lastly, I want to thank Vice Chair Bueller. We had at least one conversation every week about something. Just thank you for your time, your attention and your dedication to this. So thank you. With that said, it is time for elections and we were going to have a new chair and I will entertain a motion for a new chairman or chairperson.
I would like to nominate Mr. Bueller for chair. Second that.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, seconded by Commissioner Tui. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. So with that said, ma'am, congratulations, Madam Chair. Okay. Any other nominations? Sir? Anything else I need to do? There. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Floor is yours, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I first would like to say thank you to my fellow commissioners very much and thank you also to Commissioner Jones for your last two years of leadership. Thank you for everything. Moving forward, we will go on to the election of vice chair and I will entertain a motion nomination.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Greg Kernan as vice chair.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations. Do we need to check for any other nominations? Is there anybody else?
That would like to be nominated for the position of vice chair? Hearing none.
Hearing none. We'll move forward. And the last item on the agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Commissioner Tui and a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.